We are live.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the August council meeting. I would now like to ask councillor Great James to do her welcome to country.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe and my fellow councillors. Firstly, I pay my respects to our ancestors. I acknowledge our elders, both past, present and emerging. I'd like to acknowledge the Yorta Yorta nations and all its people, whose land we meet on today. So on behalf of the elders council, the sixteen family groups and the eight respected tribes who share in the status of traditional owners of this land, I say a very warm welcome to country. Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe.
Thank you very much. I would also like to acknowledge that we Greater Shepparton City Council acknowledge the Yorta Yorta peoples of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay our respect to the tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item number three, which is our privacy notice, this public meeting is being streamed live by our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website along with official minutes of this meeting. Item four, our governance principles, council considers that the recommendation contained in this agenda gives effect to the overarching governance principles stated in section nine dash two of the Local Government Act 2020. These principles are listed in the agenda from item one to nine. Item number five, apologies councillors. Item number six, which is a declaration of conflict or interest. Does any councillor have a declaration of conflict or interest they need to declare? No, thank you. Confirmation of minutes, which is the item number seven, is any item of the minutes opposed. Would the council like to move a recommendation on page seven?
I'll move that the minutes of the twentieth of July two thousand and twenty-one council meeting is circulated to be confirmed.
Very much. Do I have a second there? Councillor Spinks, all those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Item number eight, public question time, nil received. Item number nine, deputations and petitions, nil received. Councillors, we now go to page eight, item ten point one, community asset committee update. There is also a recommendation on page eight. Would the council like to move the motion please? Councillor Dula?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I would like to move the recommendation as a motion and it says that the council adopt the community asset committee's policy as attached to this report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Priestley, Councillor Dula, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. Now, as part of section sixty-five of Local Government Act two thousand and twenty, council established seventeen committee, community assets committees in August last year. Now, these community assets committees were previously delegated section eighty-six committees, but as a part of transition to this model of committee assets committees, sorry, community assets committees, what we have done is that a policy has been devised and that's the policy which is ready for adoption today. A bit of those, a bit of information about these committees, basically, the committees are responsible for the management, day-to-day management of these, these facilities that we have across the, across the municipality. Greater Shepparton has some seventeen community assets committees and they manage assets such as recreation reserves and memorial halls. There's a list given in the report. We have some seventeen volunteers, community assets committees volunteers that are across these committees. Now, changes to the Local Government Act means that the membership to these committees are no longer appointed through the ordinary council meeting and these are now covered under delegations to the CEO. So that's a change here, which basically brings relatively more flexibility to the working of the committee and council staff has to, they have to sort of work through the processes which are no longer under the local laws. They used to be under local laws, but now they come under the delegation to the CEO. These committees are, are responsible, as I've said, in the day-to-day management. They're also responsible, they are also involved in the master plan development for these facilities and they're also required to develop their own facilities improvement plan and they apply for grants. So there's a lot of work that these committees do and with this policy, it will provide a good guidance and a guiding framework to council staff to support the committees and the roles and responsibilities, the functions, the duties and the powers of instruments of delegation, they are all covered in this policy along with the, along with the operations manual, which is also part of that and, and also the instruments of delegation. So the policy is, is we expect that this policy will help council staff to work closely with the committees and support them in the performance of their duties. So that's in a snapshot and I am, I'm, I'm comfortable with the policy and happy to support it.
Thank you very much. Councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Just echoing what councillor Abdullah has had to say and I guess just to highlight while we're talking about these committees, we've got a hundred and seventeen volunteers across these seventeen different lots of assets, things like the Dukie Memorial Hall, the Murchison Community Centre and the Talamba Rec Reserve. These are people doing good work on a voluntary basis and it's the glue that makes communities work and I just want to shout out to them on behalf of all councillors that you're doing a great thing for your community, for the broader community and thank you.
Very much. Any councillor like to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. As stated, council does have seventeen of these committees and this has been brought about by changes to the Local Government Act two thousand and twenty. These committees do a fantastic job and as councillor Priestley said, there's about a hundred and seventeen community members who volunteer their time. Council wouldn't be able to function as effectively without them. And we are being presented with a new community assets policy and that directly offers support to these committees and their operations. But there's one sticking point from my perspective and that is that the report doesn't seem to marry up with what's in section sixty-five of the Local Government Act. The report presented claims that CEO should have delegation in accepting and removing committee members under this act. But, and that was a function that was previously performed by councillors at an ordinary meeting. I have asked for clarification and I can't find anything in the act to support that claim. From what I can see, section sixty-five only refers to council, it doesn't refer to the CEO and that is something that I'd be happy to retain. I mean, until we get clarification, I'm just concerned we might be basing a judgment on something that isn't, is only partially correct. And if people are happy with that, that's fine, but personally, I think we should retain the right to appoint and remove members if that is still within our powers under the act. And at the very least, we should be given some justification for removing of members and none of that is stipulated in this policy. So I think it needs a bit of work. It's like, again, it's under new parameters, new Local Government Act requirements, but it's our first attempt. I just don't think it's quite there yet, especially considering the report was saying different to what I found in the act. And if the CEO would like to clarify if this is incorrect, I'd be very, very happy if he could, please.
Happy to clarify and call upon the there to do the clarification.
Thank you. Any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Brokey?
Sorry, we could have done clarification.
I don't know. Sorry.
Sorry, any councillor?
We just kind of have a bit of clarification.
Yeah, just like to clarify that we've, we've actually received legal advice and that from Maddox and that legal advice has indicated that the delegation of members of the community asset committee is delegated under the S five instrument of delegations to the chief executive officer. Now, these delegations under S five are done by exclusion. So unless something specifically excluded from being delegated, all delegated authorities are therefore delegated to the CEO and this, this one pertaining to the community asset committees is one of those committees that can be delegated. Whereas an example that cannot be delegated are members of the, of delegated committees, which is our development hearing panel, that cannot be delegated to community asset committees that can.
Thank you. Councillor Summer?
Just with the can be delegated and cannot be, is it absolutely required that it be delegated to the CEO, I guess. I, I, obviously I need more information because I haven't seen the legal advice. What it says under the act is something different than what it says in the report. I have asked for clarification, haven't received it. So I might even abstain rather than going yes or no on this one just for the fact that there seems to be a bit more conversation to be had, so.
So, Mayor O'Keeffe, we are confirming that the report as written is correct and is based on the act and legal advice.
No, you're saying it's based on legal advice, not the act itself. I haven't seen that legal advice.
Confirming that the report is correct.
It's not correct.
Okay. Any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Brokey?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'd just like firstly, thank councillor Abdullah, she summed that up pretty well in terms of what the functionality will be of these new committees or the new named committees. There are some changes in regards, as councillor Summer pointed out, in regards to how they're appointed, et cetera. But in terms of the functionality and primarily to manage the nominated community facilities, it's really about still continuing to, in taking in the local input, empowering the local people, making the local decisions and really we represent all of the community at this particular level, but at the grassroots level in managing these community assets, we're just so thankful that they, they come on board and that they put their hands up to do that. Thank you.
Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Dula, would you like to write a reply?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I just want to say that thanks councillor Summer for asking the question, but in light of everything that has been said and the briefing that was given on this particular report, I'm comfortable that we can go ahead with this policy and it is of course going to bring greater flexibility and I'm comfortable with that. So on the basis of that, I, I would support this policy.
Okay, thank you. We'll go into the vote. Those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to page twelve, item ten point two, the Greater Shepparton LGBT IQA plus advisory committee membership. There is also a recommendation on page twelve. Would the council like to move the motion? Councillor Spinks?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I would like to move that the, the recommendation to a motion that the council appoint the following community representatives to the Greater Shepparton LGBT IQA plus advisory committee for a period of one year commencing on seventeen August two thousand and twenty-one and concluding on twenty-three August two thousand and twenty-two with the members listed in the motion on page twelve of the agenda.
Very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Summer, Councillor Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
Absolutely. Thank you. I'm very happy to support this motion and to appoint the inaugural members of our newly formed LGBT QIA plus advisory committee. I want to say a massive congratulations to all of the people on this list and to thank them for being a part of this opportunity. The first year of the committee will involve the important decision-making of deciding the terms of reference and an action plan, among other things. And I greatly look forward to seeing what recommendations will be brought to us to help create a more inclusive and fabulous region. As a fierce ally, I will do all that I can to support the needs and actions of the LGBT QIA plus community, but nothing can be more important than hearing directly from the community itself. This committee will help to empower individuals, to amplify their voices and to shine a light on the ways that we can better serve this community. The existence of this committee and the wonderful group of people that have nominated to be a part of it will help to ensure that all human beings across the ever-evolving spectrum of identity can feel safe, heard, seen and welcome across Greater Shepparton. So well done and congratulations to all of the nine members who are being appointed to the committee. And it's also worth mentioning, thank you to councillor Summer who started this process in the previous council term. It's very exciting to see it coming to fruition and to be able to very proudly say that we will have this committee up and running with a wonderful new members and I can't wait to see what they do. Thank you.
Very much. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe and well said. Councillor Spinks also so, so excited that it's finally coming to fruition. A lot of work in there. So there's lots of familiar names on the list and lots of not-so-familiar names, which is great. It's good to see so much engagement this early on. And obviously they've got a lot of housekeeping to do. It's a brand-new committee and that will include the terms of reference. They were given to us as an attachment to this motion, but I'm assuming since it wasn't in the recommendation, it must be, that must go through the committee for adoption and then come back to us. It'll just flag there that the CEO also has the right to remove members and they might want to look at that and put that into a councillor resolution instead, maybe not to guide the committee in any way. But anyway, yes, I can't wait for this committee to get into action and see what all the positive initiatives happen from blowing through the LGBTI community and beyond. And I hope they have the first motion up, which again, I'm not wanting to direct, but a rainbow infrastructure would be terrific. Very happy.
Very much. Any councillor like to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Brokey?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Just certainly like to support the new advisory committee. Fantastic. Well done councillor Summer. I know that you have been really pushing this for some, some time, so well done on that. And certainly support the LGBT IQA plus or affectionately known the alphabet group advisory committee being put forward. I know earlier this year the councillor Spinks had put forward a notice of motion with a raft of initiatives to support this particular community. And although it didn't get up at the time, I certainly applaud her on that. And whereas this particular vehicle and with its terms of references, I would assume that, I'm sure, and they will explore some of those initiatives that were put forward by councillor Spinks, but also perhaps put forward a number of other recommendations that we perhaps haven't even thought about. So I look forward to that. I congratulate those inaugural advisory committee members and I wish them very much all the very best for their very first term.
Thank you very much. Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Dula?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say huge congratulations to all the founding members of this committee. It's such a, it's so heartwarming to see that this committee is finally here and it just goes to show that the efforts that have been made to make our region safer and more inclusive and the diversity that we have and the appreciation of this diversity through this committee is so encouraging. So all of you, all the members, keep up the good work and we look forward to seeing what you, what ideas you present to the committee and recommend to council through your committee. Thanks.
Very much. Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. For those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page sixteen, item eleven point one, the Audit Risk Management Committee meeting minutes from September two thousand and twenty to February two thousand and twenty-one. There is also a recommendation on page sixteen. Would the council like to move the motion please? Councillor Priestley?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'd like to move a motion as printed on page sixteen of the agenda that the council receive and note the minutes of the Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting dated seventeen June, nine September, sixteen December, ten February of two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one as attached to this report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Summer, councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Just to speak briefly, I guess, about the work of the Audit and Risk Management Committee. It's a committee set up to effectively check on the operations of council and the, making sure that the appropriate checks and balances are in place. There are, they receive the reports from the independent auditors and they also have independent community members that are sit on that group. They systematically work through the financial accounts, they review the results of the audit and consider the risks that council face and how they're managing those risks on an ongoing basis. There's some very skilled people that are sitting on that group and they're doing a good job reviewing the council operations and I commend their work and thank them for it. There's an extraordinary amount of reading material. The people that are external experts that are on it are receiving a modest payment for their work that I think would, would not go near the amount of work that it takes to work through the hundreds of pages of reports that are part of this, but I thank them for that and yeah, commend the report as title.
Thank you very much. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, it is great, some reading all that. Quite a lot to take in because it came in one big chunk rather than being fed to us and I guess that's a little bit disappointing. Some of these reach back to over a year ago and at the time there were some relatively hefty issues on the table and there was some detailed commentary around some of the major risks, insurance claims, legislative responsibilities and where we were sitting in, under those. And these are issues that don't always reach councillors, but councillors should have timely access to the Audit and Risk Committee minutes because it gives us some insight, it gives us context and it gives us an expert opinion about these issues. So in future, I hope these can be presented far more regularly. They are a wonderful resource and I'd like to know if our CEO has handed in his credit card before OD on Shepparton News. So it would be great if we could see them first. Thank you.
Very much. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. For those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page twenty, item eleven point two. The Audit Risk Management Committee on confirm minutes on the ninth of June two thousand and twenty-one. There is a recommendation also on page twenty for the council to move the motion. Councillor Priestley?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'd like to move the motion as per page, as per page twenty, sorry, page twenty of the agenda that the council note the unconfirmed minutes of the Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting held on the ninth of June two thousand and twenty-one as attached to this report and to note that the minutes will be confirmed by the Audit and Risk Management Committee at their next meeting and any substantive changes to the unconfirmed minutes will be reported back to council.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Dobson, councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just simply to echo the comments that I made before. Thanks, Mayor O'Keeffe.
Right. Councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion? You're on mute, councillor Dobson.
I'll just, I'll just echo the comments that are made by councillor Priestley before.
Okay, thank you very much. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. For those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page twenty-three, item eleven point three, the July two thousand and twenty-one monthly financial report. There is also a recommendation on page twenty-three. Would the council like to move the motion? Councillor Dula?
Thank you. I would like to move the recommendation that the council receive and note the July two thousand and twenty-one monthly financial report as a motion.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Dobson, councillor Dula, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Quickly, this is our regular process whereby a monthly financial report is presented to council. The two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget was endorsed in June councils, June's council meeting. We recall that the operating surplus according to the budget was eighteen point one seven million, total revenues of one sixty, one point nine million and total expenditure of one forty-three point eight million and our capital works budget was seventy-one point five eight million. Now, this report, basically it just presents the actual financial performance compared to the adopted budget in the first month of this financial year. And we, the budget, sorry, the report presents different aspects of our financial performance, operating performance is also part of that. And according to the operating performance, the, the key, the key performance indicators are presented to the council and looking at the actual and projected key performance indicators such as working capital or percentage of, or loans as percentage of rates. We are uncomfortable that they are, that when compared to the targets, we are doing, we are tracking well and these KPIs are within the satisfactory range. Then moving on to our income statement, having a quick look at the income statement, we can see that there are positive variances between the adopted budget and actual performance at the end of July. And some of the positive variances are mainly due to the, I mean, due to the other income that is projected to be hundred and thirty-seven thousand with dollars, which is more than, which is twelve point nine percent more than the adopted budget. And this favorable variance is mainly due to the income that is coming from TV Health for the use of the McIntosh Centre for the COVID nineteen vaccine hub. So this is a positive variance in our, in our first month of this financial year. And of course, looking at the capital works performance, again, capital grants is projecting that there'll be one point seven six million dollars more than the adopted budget. This is again favorable, but it is, it is, and it is mostly due to some additional grants and funding that we have received from the local roads and community infrastructure programme. Now, there is also a negative variance in capital work statement, which is mainly because of the projects that would not be completed in the previous financial year and they have been brought forward to this year. So this unfavorable variance, favorable variance is mainly due to this additional work. Our CEO, sorry, our cash, sorry, our cash flow statement is also showing that there has been a two percent decrease compared to the adopted budget. The projection is showing a decrease.
Councillor Dula, do you like an extension?
No, that's all. I think I'm just, I'm overall, I'm comfortable with the, with the financial, financial report that has been presented to us.
Thank you very much. Councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I would. And given the fact that we're only one month into the new financial year, perhaps I thought it might be a good idea to have a look at some of the underlying figures and statements that goes with the financial report. And one of the things that hasn't been widely circulated is and commented on and on and perhaps it's, it should be within the public sphere is that we have a zero rate increase for this financial year. Now, what does that mean? It means that we're trying to assist some of our rate payers as we go through the year, under understanding that COVID nineteen is putting up a lot of uncertainty and still does even today in Shepparton. The uncertainty is still with us and that uncertainty is going to hit our rate payers, it's going to hit their income over the next twelve months. And I think that what we've got to do here is be very conservative in our outlook and that's why I was delighted to be part of the team that recommended a zero rate increase. Now, that may not mean that your rates don't increase this year depending upon the evaluation of your property, but zero rates, and I think from memory, if I'm not wrong, this is the first time in the history of this council, certainly over the last twenty years, that there's been a zero, zero increase in the rates. And I think councillors and council management should be congratulated on that. I think what also is going to happen is that the COVID situation could, could, could be a problem with grant money that could be coming through. I mean, every person, every organisation in the country is going to, is going to be hit, even when COVID's finished. I think this will go for the next three or four or half of those in years. What I'd like to do, by the way, in, we talked about a minute ago, councillor Abdullah talked about the Capital Works Programme. The annual Capital Works Programme is about seventy-three millions plus. Out of that, we're going to, it's projected that we get thirty one million plus back from grants, et cetera. So the shortfall of that is about forty millions and that's where, that's where council comes into it. But I'd like to just share with you a couple of factors that I've picked up on the budget over the next few years, over the next twelve months. And one of the, one of the departments, and you'll excuse me if I refer to my notes here. One of the departments we have is the growing Greater Shepparton Business and Services. Now, this is, is tasked with driving regional demand for rate paying businesses from both within Greater Shepparton and its core catchment, regional centres within a hundred and fifty kilometre radius. But there are key roles encouraging consumers to return to Greater Shepparton to undertake business post COVID nineteen. And the programme works with council business.
Would you like an extension, Councillor Dobson?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Great.
And to deliver a series of marketing programmes and activities which support the vision of persisting greater Shepparton, the premier business and services hub. Now, the total expenses are four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, which council takes out of their rate revenues. Another area that I'd like to talk about is the community where the total expenses are thirty, just over thirty million. And the, the income is just over sixteen million, leaving a shortfall that council and rate payers stump up at about fourteen million dollars. And we're talking about active living management, healthy community programmes, indoor sports, kids' town, community facilities, early childhood education, maternal and child health. These are areas that don't really get the highlights with the roads, rates and taxes part of the, of, of, of the community. Finally, I'd just like to, before I finish, talk about the Healthy Communities Programme. And the key initiatives here to deliver one year, one of the Victorian Health Pundit Local Government Park project, which engages young people in public health, activities in the park, Sports Hall of Fame, Sporting Chance post COVID, COVID. The expenses of that are four hundred and eighty eight thousand and the income's forty six, total net expense of four hundred and forty two thousand. So I just wanted to highlight some of those things that really don't get an airing when we're talking about the financials of the council. And it's very important that as councillors, we share this information as much as we can. And over the next few council meetings, I intend to do a bit more of that.
Very much. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Spence?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Just to take the opportunity, it is, you know, the first month of the new financial year. I'm looking forward to the next month's meeting. Hopefully we'll have the final twelve month statement from last year, but we are hitting the ground running into the next one. Time stops for no human. And with that, it means rate notices are going out. So I want to take the opportunity to remind our community that we have a hardship policy. If you are all struggling, if you need information, please call council. We are, rates are not intended to bankrupt anybody. So if you need a hand, we all do at one point or another. Please make sure you take advantage of this opportunity and ask the questions, reach out. The policy is there to support you and it should be doing that. So please take the opportunity. And if you haven't got your notice already, it's probably nearly there. So just a heads up.
Very much. Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour. Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page twenty five, item eleven point four, Instrument of Delegation, Instrument of Subdelegation, Environment Protection Act twenty seventeen. There is also a recommendation on page twenty five. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I'd like to move the recommendation as a motion to page twenty five, which reads that the council, one, confirm the approval of the S five instrument of delegation dated the twentieth of April twenty twenty one as attached. And two, approve the S eighteen instrument of subdelegation, which will come into force immediately upon the common seal of council being fixed to the instrument as attached.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Councillor Brophy?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. It's a, I think it's a prudent update. It's been prompted by changes to the Environment Protection Act. Specifically, management for onsite wastewater systems with less than five thousand litres on any given day has been transitioned to council. So we're now responsible for that. EPA remain responsible for systems that exceed five thousand litres. The Act also had changes, delegated changes in council's management of litter and residential noise, but those transitional arrangements have already been set by the EPA, so we're not necessarily dealing with those. It's just wastewater by the sense of what, what I read in the report and hopefully, yeah, it shouldn't, I think, I think it's prudent, so I support it.
Thank you very much. Councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Very quickly, thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. It is just instrument of delegation and subdelegation. It's really, as Councillor Summer pointed out, we're putting the house in order. Not that the house is out of order by any stretch of the imagination, but it's, it's bringing into, into line the legislative and requirement changes that in a formative manner. That's pretty much it.
Thank you very much. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour. Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page twenty eight, item eleven point five, Contracts Awarded Under Delegation, July twenty twenty one. There's also a recommendation on page twenty eight. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Sally?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page twenty eight of the agenda, item eleven point five, Contracts Awarded Under Delegation, July twenty twenty one.
Very much. Do I have a second please? Councillor Dobson, Councillor Sally, would you like to speak to the motion?
Very quickly, I'll just highlight a few projects that have been underway, that have been delegated by our CEO and relevant directors. The first one being two one six four, which is some work around the Coles Grove Three landfill cell two, which is Geo Technical Inspection and Testing Authority. We also had some funds allocated to item two one two seven, which is the Moore Street Mall redevelopment project management services. And as well, the item two one seven nine, which is the Carabok Park Youth Club Hall facility. Obviously, a significant amount of history is going to be lost there, but that's made way for the CFA and a retardation basin there. And the work that's going to be completed at Riverlink's box office refurbishment as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thanks, Mayor O'Keefe. The interesting stuff here is requests for tenders advertised, but not yet awarded. And it's interesting and it's terrific to see that the Moore Street Mall redevelopment construction done. Some contract is under evaluation at the moment and that means it's underway. The other area that I just wanted to talk about was that Taturra and Marukna are also involved, South Shepparton. The old Duki Road, Lockwood Road, New Duki Road intersection, that's going to be an interesting one. And there's some mash felting servicing. There's, there's all sorts of areas around here, but it's good to see that Shepparton is not the only area that's, that's going to be a part of the, the tender process. So I have very much pleasure in, in supporting the motion.
Very much. But any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Just noting how many, sometimes we don't have all that many and here we have pages and pages and pages. So it's so good to see. And the big ticket items that have been mentioned also, the mall reconstruction, which it's not a designer would have chosen, but you can't help but be excited about it. It's a massive change to the heart of our CBD. Really needed something done. And that's going to happen during our term, which is really amazing. And then also the design for the sports stadium, which hopefully will happen during our term with the upcoming elections. We can start advocating for that. At the moment, it's unfunded, but it's also very exciting. So yeah, great month. Obviously, a lot's getting done. And it, and that, and this section of the agenda is where we can really see how the cogs are turning.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour. Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page thirty four, item eleven point six, CEO Employment and Remuneration Policy. There is also a recommendation on page thirty four. Would a councillor like to move a motion please? Councillor Abdullah?
Thank you. I would like to move the recommendation as a motion, which says that the council adopt the Chief Executive Officer Employment and Remuneration Policy as attached to this report.
Very much. Do I have a second please? Councillor Brophy? Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
I should declare an interest in this. I might just say it.
Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks, Mayor O'Keefe. Now, it's a requirement of our Local Government Act twenty twenty to develop, adopt and maintain a policy for, for the chief executive officers employment matters such as appointment or remuneration, contract terms, annual performance review and, and certain other related matters. So this policy must be adopted by, within six months of first of July twenty twenty one, we have been advised. Now, the recommendation here is for the policy to be implemented through a committee, which is the Employment and Remuneration Committee. Now, this arrangement to have, to have a committee is, is, although it's new for our council, at least in the last, we did not have that arrangement, but otherwise it's, it's the best practice approach in organisations so as to efficiently and effectively manage CEOs employment matters. This committee is, so it is proposed that the committee to have the mayor, deputy mayor, two councillors and also an independent member on this committee. The presence of an independent member is really encouraging because it will definitely add to the good governance approach through the transparency and accountability on all the CEO employment matters. Furthermore, the committee will also be able to have a focus on, on all the CEO employment matters. And I believe that this is, this is of course, an effective way of managing CEO matters in a very timely manner. This committee will make recommendations to the council and that means that every councillor will have an opportunity to feed back into CEO employment matters such as performance appraisal or, or contract terms. So they will be the opportunity for all councillors. And they will be able to ask questions and provide their feedback to the committee. That's the arrangement that has been proposed. And, and accordingly, you know, based on the recommendations from this committee, the council will have the final authority to approve or not approve their recommendations. It is also proposed that the committee to have two meetings, at least two meetings annually. And the record of the committee meetings will be communicated to councillors, which I believe will, will be really effective because it will keep all councillors in the loop with regards to committees' activities. So I'm very supportive of this policy and its execution through the CEO Employment and Remuneration Committee. Thanks.
Very much. Councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. This is probably one of the most important components of our time in council. Not only in, down the track where you will appoint a CEO, but for those who perhaps don't know that from a councillor perspective, the only employee that the councillor's employee is the CEO, who in turn appoint the rest of the organisation. So it is a really important component that we make sure that we do get right and to have a policy in place to reflect that. What included in that, as Councillor Abdullah indicated, all the details, but it's about the recruitment, it's about the appointment, appointment process, about the contract, about the performance monitoring of the CEO, the annual review and any regulations that come into play here. So it is an important part. We need to get that right for the future and ongoing. So yes, I certainly support this.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Prepared something here because I'm fairly strongly of this opinion. I'm objecting due to the proposed CEO Employment and Remuneration Committee, which will only be made up of four councillors and an external member. Now, councillor, councillor Brophy is a hundred percent correct. This is extremely important. We employ one person. The CEO is our only employee. Not a big organisation. We, we employ one person. There is no, absolutely no reason why we should outsource or reduce councillor participation in overseeing our one employee CEO performance. We are all elected in our own right and will inevitably have differing views on what we expect from the person leading the organisation, our CEO. So offering feedback from outside this committee, when you're outside the loop, it might be efficient for the people inside the loop, but it's certainly not as effective as a robust collective conversation with all nine of us in a room. It runs the risk of bias within the committee because it may silence those with strong viewpoints who don't happen to be allowed on the committee. A quorum of only three people, that's all it takes. Those, that's what's required to make decisions about who leads this massive organisation. So our small circle where we employ the CEO and that flows down into the organisation is going to be led by potentially three people. So I think it's our job to oversee the CEO performance. Each and every one of our roles is to do that as a group, as a collective of nine people. So it is a hard no from me. I actually feel like we're taking ten steps back with even proposing this. And it makes me quite sad because I think it is going to get over the line. So that's where I stand on being honest. So I object.
Any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Priestley?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I just want to make a couple of points that if you think about your own circumstances and you sit down to do your performance review, you probably want to do that with, you know, a manageable number of people. And if you look at the operation of anything from, from an AFL footy club through at an ASX listed company, large private family companies and the, and the like. The, the types of steps that we're taking here are in line with best practice of how these relationships work. That the policy as it stands allows excellent opportunity for all members of the council to contribute. And that I think it strikes the balance between a, a small enough group to make the process manageable and a large enough group to bring diversity of opinion.
Thank you very much. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Dobson?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I think if any councillor has concerns about the performance or or whatever of the chief executive officer by way of discussion with the committee members, that point can be put across quite easily. And again, my experience tells me that you don't need a group of seven or eight or nine or 10 people to look at a, an employment policy such as this or the remuneration, et cetera. You need people who are prepared to take the advice of other councillors and take their opinions on board and report those opinions within the committee structure. It is an efficient way of doing it. It is a, it is a modern way of doing it. And as councillor Priestley said, if you look at any corporation the size of Greater Shepparton City Council, it's the way it's been done.
Any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Abdullah, would you like your right of reply?
Yes, Mayor O'Keefe, thank you. I think Councillor Priestley and Councillor Dobson have explained it very well. The, the objections that Councillor Summer has raised. I would just like to add that, Councillor Summer, your understanding is that three councillors will be making decisions. So this committee, as, as far as I understand, and that is what I've seen on other boards and organisations where I've been involved in such committees, that these committees are not making decisions. These committees are doing the work. For instance, in performance, CEOs' performance evaluation, they are responsible to collate all the feedback that they'll receive from all nine councillors and then have a discussion and, and a discussion with the CEO. And on the basis of that, make recommendations. and on the basis of that, make recommendations. So the recommendations, so this committee is responsible for making recommendations to council. The final decision and the authority still remains with council, which includes all nine councils, councillors. So I hope that sort of, that should satisfy your concern, councillor Summer. And overall, I am, I'm comfortable. And as my fellow councillors have pointed out, that this is a best practice approach. It is to bring efficiency and effectiveness to this whole process and I'm comfortable. Thanks.
Okay, we'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Good afternoon. Councillors, we'll now go to page 37, item 12.1, Taturra RV Rest Stop Trial Outcome. There's also a point of lengthy recommendation on page 37. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Sarley?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page 37 of the agenda, item 12.1. I won't read it out, as you already alluded, that it is quite lengthy.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Councillor Summer? Councillor Sarley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Yeah, look, 12 months ago, council supported the trial of an RV rest stop in Taturra on Douglas Street and its official trial period has concluded and we now have an opportunity to endorse something long term. Going by the report, it was very successful with no local laws issues, no misuse of the space, which was kept clean and free of any illegal activity, which was good. The RV rest stop also has a positive financial impact of almost $200 per vehicle stay over one or two days, as well giving another reason for Taturra to be a destination for those travelling. Although this is directly beneficial to Taturra, an RV strategy is being developed, which will consider other locations within Greater Shepparton after consultation with key industry stakeholders. Thank you.
Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Thank you, councillor Sarley. Well explained. It's just great to see it. Anyone good news story, really. I remember all the excuses put to councillors years ago, that RV visitations do not stimulate the economy and they compete with commercial caravan parks and that's an ongoing argument. But the trial has shown that we can coexist with private enterprise as well as provide RV friendly infrastructure. So as stated, it offers three ongoing spaces at Taturra and that they can stay there for up to 48 hours. And we've measured visitation and will provide an economic boost for the town, which is great. So I sincerely hope that we can move this venture into the many other small towns that have shown interest as soon as possible. Especially during COVID times, encouraging regional people to explore regional areas should be a priority.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Spinks?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. While I'm not entirely against this concept, I would like to raise the couple of concerns that I have. The report outlines a number, a number of potential environmental impacts, including the potential for incorrect discharge of grey water and disposal of litter. It also discusses the possibility of negative social implications, including noise, campfires and parking availability. As well, it could be argued that it's a relatively large resource and monetary cost for very few users and that we must take care not to compete directly against local businesses. It's also worth noting that the large portion of this trial occurred during COVID when we weren't really allowed to go anywhere. So not saying that it wasn't an effective trial, but it potentially didn't completely get given the opportunity that it should have. And so while none of these points may be deal breakers, I think they are worthy of proper consideration. And so while I acknowledge that the Taturra businesses and residents have been consulted and are comfortable with this recommendation, I would like to caution that the continuation of the rest stop be treated not as a permanent fixture, but as an extension of the trial, highlighting point two in the recommendation, which requests a review to occur in three years' time. So I hope it goes well. I hope nothing goes wrong in the next three years. I very much look forward to everyone using the space well and it being a viable option. But I would like to see what a proper go at it looks like and what the discussion looks like in three years' time.
Any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Dobson?
As, as a user of these sorts of parks right throughout Australia, I suppose I can speak with some authority on it. The grey nomads of which I might become one day use these parks a lot and they use it with a lot of, you know, they take care of it because they understand that it's put up there for their use. It's, and I, I see what councillor Spinks is coming to, but my experience tells me councillor Spinks that really they, people in the main do look after these, these type of sites. RV vehicles, recreation vehicles are the biggest sort of vehicles. They're not your tents, they're not your sort of, you know, little, you know, put a swag on the ground stuff. They are self-contained. When I say self-contained, there's sewage and water, hot water and power and all that sort of stuff. They're all self-contained. And I think if you, and I know that those towns that become recognised and authorised recreation vehicle friendly towns, the benefits to the local economy are great. I understand in saying all that, that there's going to be some objection, if there hasn't been already, from existing caravan parks. I think we've got to manage that. But I can imagine that a place like Dukie, for example, if this, if the Taturra job works out well, if you could place like Dukie, we could set up a small time RV stop out there. You've got the wineries, you've got the, the walk around the, you know, around Mount Major. You've got the hotels, you've got all sorts of things there. You've got the rail trail. And I think it's just going to be another asset to a town like those towns. So I'd like to see this, not so much concentrated around Shepparton, but certainly as, as an asset to our smaller towns, your Murchison's, even Talamba, certainly Dukie, Gatandra, they've all got something to offer for those people who want to stay overnight. So I understand your concerns, agree with them. But I think that the report goes a long way in, in in sort of nullifying a lot of those concerns. But I, I agree, let's keep an eye on it.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Brophy?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Really pleased, so pleased to see that the, we had the trial outcome and really pleased that it was in Taturra. Because so many times people say that, you know, we're Shepparton centric or Marupna centric and we don't look at the outside town. To have the trial there is absolutely fantastic. I know a number of RV enthusiasts and they've been knocking on my door for some time to say that council should be doing more. This trial has been put to, put to good use. Anecdotally, and you know, as you can say, the vibe tells you that, you know, RV is a really positive outcome for the region. But to have data, it reinforces and the feedback gives us some, something to play with here. There's fors and against, you know, it's not all beers and skittles and there are concerns and viewpoints and they've been considered as well. What I do like out of this is that the last, the dot in that particular recommendation in number five being note that the Greater Shepparton RV strategy will be developed. And I think that's what we need to do with a number, as councillor Dobson just pointed out, a number of the other areas within our municipality who really want to come on board with this, whether it be, you know, Dukie, Murchison, Marupna, Merrigan, et cetera. So really looking forward to seeing it again. As I said, not all beer and skittles and I'm sure there'll be some, some issues that'll be raised. But I think working through it with the strategy and with the outcomes that we've got from the Taturra trial will certainly help.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Sarley, would you like your right of reply?
No, just acknowledge the fact that the points that councillor Spinks made are very valid and the trial period that's taken place now will address perhaps some of those concerns leading into the strategy on really big on community consultation. That will happen when developing this strategy. And perhaps as time progresses, any other concerns that have been raised, no doubt will be tabled in and we can work through that before we look at opening up these in other locations within Greater Shepparton.
Thank you very much. We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page 47, item 12.2, the international engagement policy review. There's also a recommendation on page 47. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Sarley?
Thanks, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page 47 of the agenda, item 12.2, international engagement policy review. And the recommendation is that the council re-adopt the international engagement policy as attached to this report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Councillor Summer? Councillor Sarley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Very briefly, thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Look, the international engagement policy ensures we are controlled in our relationships with other cities across the globe. It provides council with the resources required to generate social and economic growth, but in a controlled manner. One example of a strong international relationship that has been achieved before with a presence of council at Asia Fruit Logistics Expo in Hong Kong. So having international connections unlocks opportunities and, as I mentioned, contributes to the growth of our local economy. So moving forward, I think it's really important we continue to maintain and generate new and existing international connections.
Thank you very much. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I'm happy to support this with minimal changes. Obviously, since the policy was first launched, there's been major upheavals in international travel and global business trends. At this stage, we should probably cool our heels, but not throw the baby out with the bathwater. This policy has demonstrated merit in the past and I hope to see it in action again soon one day.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Brophy?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Just reiterating, this was firstly adopted back in 2017 and it's about appropriate measures, about how we engage on an international basis, even though we're local government. We do have a federal government which does that for us as well. But from a local perspective, it's not about, you know, sending CEO off to do a Belt and Road initiative strategy overseas. It's really about relationships and it's about sister cities, friendship, about delegations visit and formulating trade amongst all of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? I might just comment before we go to the vote. Having two trips to China, Hong Kong and Jakarta, you know, delegations in 2018 and 2019, there were significant opportunities for the Greater Shepparton region. Of course, we're all feeling disappointed that we're not going to be able to work in the same way. But this is a very important reference to this particular document. Is we will be doing things in a different way, but keeping open those communications and relationships, which is really important. We certainly don't want to lose a lot of the hard work that has been done in the past. All right, we'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page 51, item 13.1, Appointment of Members to the Greater Shepparton Aerodrome Advisory Committee for 2021, 2023. There was also a recommendation there on page 51. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Dobson? You're on mute.
I'll be happy when all that stops. I moved that the council appoint the following commercial aeropost operations representatives, shepherding aerocar club representatives and community representatives to the Greater Shepparton Aerodrome Advisory Committee for a period of two years commencing 1 July 2021 and through 30th of June 2023. There is Simon Brig, Michael Muller, Tom Garrett, Ken Muston, Chris Gregory and Alan Coe. And obviously formally acknowledge and thank Barry Halliday, Susan Carroll and Karen Gurney for their outstanding contributions as they conclude the term, terms of memberships on the Shepparton Aerodrome Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Councillor Priestley? Councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Not a lot to say about this, but I'd just like to congratulate those people who put their hands up in this. Some very experienced flying people there, Tom Garrett, for example, who's a helicopter. Alan Coe and Ken Muston, they're well known in the, in the air, air industry around Shepparton. And they do, they do perform a, a great, I suppose they have a great partnership with council in giving information and advice to the council. And I think it's very important that we keep this going. There's a term of reference for the committee and that terms of reference includes a membership of minimum of five and a maximum of nine members and it's a two-year term. So look, pretty well straightforward, good people on it and will be giving good advice and they're experienced people and they all been, they're all been around Shepparton for a long time, so they know what they're on about.
Thank you very much. Councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I just want to echo the comments by councillor Dobson and particularly note and thank Barry, Susan and Karen for their service on the committee. And lastly, note that there is the future potential for some additional members and this is an all-male committee. So if we had some young women out there that were flying, and I know that we do, it'd be terrific if they were to consider participation in something like this. It would be, it'd be great.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page 55, item 13.2, the road discontinuance of Parkinley Street in Murchison. There's also a fellow link, the recommendation there on page 55. Would a councillor please like to move the motion? Councillor Dull?
Thank you. I would like to move the recommendation on page 55 as a motion. I won't read all, it's a lengthy recommendation, so I won't read it.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Councillor Summer? Councillor Dull, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. Just quickly, this motion is about the road discontinuation of western part of MP Road, which is in Murchison. And it is about the administrative process to make this arrangement public. Now, this is part of the process that started when the owner of 25 Gregory Street made a proposal to council to purchase this part of the road, as it's mentioned in the motion. And it is, as it is currently splitting the property, the abutal property into two non-adjoning portions. Now, this road has been assessed as some, as the part which is not required for public use. So it is considered appropriate to transfer the ownership of the, of the, of the land to the, to the property owner at 25 Gregory Street. Council has consulted with all the service providers such as Parkor or GB Water or GM Water, Parks Victoria as well, just to make sure that there are no services underneath the road and there are no objections from these, these service providers. So all these authorities have confirmed that they don't have any objections and if this, if the sale of this part of the road goes ahead. Council's intention has also been advertised and we haven't received any community objections to this proposal. I believe that a proposal to use this part of the road was also discussed whereby it was proposed to use this park for planting trees and it has been discussed and the interested party has shown some, some positive response. So I hope that that goes ahead. All in all, I think if, if today the, if we approve this motion and the endorsement of council, if it goes ahead, the land sale process will, will actually will result in, will first go to the valuer basically as a part of the process. So a valuer will evaluate the, the value of this land and, and with the completion of the sales process, council will be generating some revenue. So all in all, I am satisfied with the process so far and its intended outcome. And on the basis of that, I support this motion. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keeffe. I'm happy to proceed on the basis that no objections were received by the public and that we have consulted and we're acting in accordance with the relevant acts, including Sale of Land Act 1962. I'd be more comfortable if we had our own road discontinuance policy for reference, but as it stands, we are ticking all the boxes.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to the vote. Councillors, we now go to page fifty eight, item thirteen point three, the recommendation to award contract number two one three six, construction of Vibe Reserve Pavilion redevelopment stage three. Please note you also have a confidential attachment. Would a council like to read the recommendation on page fifty eight? Counselor Sali?
Thank you, Mary Keefe. I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page fifty eight of the agenda, item thirteen point three. Thank you.
Do I have a second please? Counselor Spinks? Counselor Sali, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mary Keefe. Look, a really exciting project for Vibe Reserve Precinct. The four million dollar plus development will see a number of things take place, including the demolition of the car park, relocation of water tanks and irrigation system, construction of new car park, car park lighting and landscape areas, including irrigation, playground area and maintenance entrance. More importantly, the major works, which will be the construction of the pavilion extension, including structural, mechanical, electrical and hydraulic works, fire services, finishings and surveying. Adding to that, as I mentioned, it is just over four million dollars, and it is clearly a big investment. And you would hope that this contract would be awarded to a local company. That was achieved with co-construction being the successful tenderer, so that's great that the money will be kept locally. Once works are completed, it will provide a much better experience for the user groups, which include Caramomas Cricket Club, Shepherd and Rugby Union Club, Shepherd and Soccer Club and the Eastern Rangers Junior AFL Club. Also, I just want to highlight the Caramomas Cricket Club, which is the longest standing user located at Vibe Reserve. They've been there for forty-eight years at the current site, and I'm sure they're really excited for this redevelopment. As I mentioned, big investment, but I love seeing investment into sporting and community infrastructure. So I'll be very happy to support this recommendation.
Thank you very much. Counselor Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, yes. I hope that there is never a day where I don't take a very deep breath before I say, yep, let's spend four million dollars. But I think in this particular instance, it's going to go a very long way. This will be a brilliant asset to the Shepparton South Community House, the various sporting clubs that utilise the Vibe at Reserve, Vibe at Reserve space, and to the Shepparton South communities more broadly. It's really exciting for this end of town in Shepparton. I would like to make mention of the environmental considerations. Great effort has been taken to retain as many of the trees as possible that are there, and to utilise as many sustainable practices as possible within the design and the construction processes, which is very exciting. As well, the social implications indicate great benefit for all of the stakeholders that will call this space home. I fully expect that this particular asset will be money well spent, and I'm excited to see it come to fruition. And we'll be sure to walk my kids down the road to check it out. I think it's going to be money well spent, and I can't wait for the Shep South Community House and all of the various people that use that space to have their brand new building.
Thank you very much. Would any council like to speak against the motion? Would a council like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the, oh, Counselor Presley, last minute there.
Thank you, Mary Keefe. Just quickly to highlight, I guess, the amazing transition this will be for the Shepparton South Community Centre. They're an amazing organisation, and they do incredible work, and they are in invisible conditions, which they have been tolerating for a long time. So I'm really, really excited for them to see them getting into some new digs soon, and they won't know themselves.
I'm agreeing with that. Any other council wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. For those in favour. Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, your note on page sixty two, item fourteen, confidential management reports, which I have highlighted as under item thirteen point three. Item fifteen, documents for signing and sealing, nil receipt. Item, sorry, on page sixty three, councillor activities under councillor reports. Item sixteen point one, councillor activities, July twenty twenty one. There is a recommendation on page sixty three as well. Would a council like to move a motion? Counselor Dobson?
Yes, I'd like to move the motion on page sixty three that reads that the council received a note, the summary of councillors' community interaction briefing programme and record of assemblies of councils.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Counselor Presley? Counselor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, it, it should be noted, Mary Keefe, that not only do we meet every week on a Tuesday, takes up all the, all, all the day on Tuesday going over matters. But we also, as noted in this report, do a lot more and go to a lot of, a lot of places to support our community. And in particular, can I, can I just mention NADOC Week two thousand and twenty-one? Unfortunately, I was away from the time, but there was the flag raising ceremony, a couple of those. There was a visit to Rambalarra Elders Facility. There was obviously the Yordi Order Nations NADOC Week twenty-one celebration. So that was just a few rotary club, there's a few obviously, a few speaking engagements. But we're always out in the community, and I feel as we, and I get the feeling, Mary Keefe, that all councillors are champing a bit, waiting for COVID to go away, so that we can go out and do a bit more visiting, you know, to the local sporting groups, the footy clubs, get to know what's the, you know, what's the flavour of, of our community. Not, not only in Shepparton, but it's important, you know, we get out to Merrigan, we get out to Murchison, and we get out to Dukie and, and all the rest of the towns that really are thriving in the Golden Valley. So congratulations to all councillors who put in. You're on, all on various committees. Most of us are on three or four or five committees. And we also go out and see as many of our constituents as we can. I, I recommend the motion to council.
Thank you very much. Counselor Presley, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Mary Keefe.
Any council like to speak against the motion? Would a council like to speak to the motion? Counselor James? You're on mute.
Yeah, just taking it off.
That's it, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, just, just wanted to say July is a very exciting month, of course, for our, for our Aboriginal community throughout the Golden Valley, or right across Australia for that matter. Now, I just, just wanted to say thank you to all of the, the council, to the council, first of all, and also to all the councillors for attending the functions throughout that week. It was really, really was a great week this week. And we had a lot of, a lot of people attending the functions this, this year as well. And also to thank our, our community in Shepparton too as well, because it was great participation at all those functions. And lots and lots of children involved in the activities, which is really positive for us to go from here onwards. So just to call out and say thank you to the community and our councillors for attending the functions. Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks for that, Counselor James. Any council wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. For those in favour. Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page sixty five. Item sixteen point two, council committee reports, nil received. Item sixteen point three, we have a notice of motion. Sixteen point three point one, universal access matching grant scheme, commercial properties investigation and reporting, which has been put forward by Counselor Summer. Counselor Summer, would you please like to read out your notice of motion?
Thank you, Mary Keefe. It reads that the council investigate options for a universal access matching grant scheme for commercial properties within Greater Shepparton. The investigation should include financial implications, eligibility criteria, intended outcomes, alignment with current policies, and likely uptake by the community. Results will be presented as a report within three months of this tabled motion for consideration at the following ordinary meeting.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second now? Counselor Brophy?
I've taken that motion.
Thank you very much. Counselor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you very much, Mary Keefe. It's going to go over three minutes. I was just wondering if I could please have permission for the six minutes at the outset rather than be interrupted?
Yeah, it's fine.
Thank you. Okay, I'll start with a definition, and for anybody who might be unfamiliar with the concept of universal access. It is defined as any infrastructure development that enhances positive outcomes in social inclusivity and ensures no individual, community or social group is left behind or prevented from benefiting from improved infrastructure. So the idea has been run by the Disability Advisory Committee, and they are supportive, and I thank Counselor Spinks for raising it with them. So I'll start. Access is the cornerstone for good health, and it's the cornerstone of livability and citizen engagement. Ideally, planning for improved quality access should be conducted during the strategic planning stages. But historically, however, policymakers and developers have overlooked that fundamental detail, which has unfortunately resulted in a municipal menagerie of poorly planned infrastructure that requires costly retrofitting to make it accessible. So this is an opportunity to promote improved access and make it affordable. In two thousand and sixteen, six percent of people in Greater Shepparton required help due to having a disability. And that's almost four thousand people, and it's an increasing trend. Too many of these residents feel locked out of the public sphere because they are not able-bodied. This includes having limited access to buildings, streets, as well as services. And what's proposed here only deals with the built domain for commercial businesses, but it is a small step in the right direction, pardon the pun. So passing this motion will potentially incentivize and enable installation of ramps, visual aids, tactile prompts, rails, elevator, or any other inclusive infrastructure on commercial properties. As it stands, council has very little input or influence over infrastructure outside our own buildings. However, great things can be achieved with leadership and advocacy. We've seen ANZ's, Shepparton's ANZ Bank install ramp access as a single entry point, and that was at the behest of our council's then accessing and inclusion officer Louise Dwyer. She pointed out that access to buildings shouldn't be based on a hierarchy of ability, and they did listen. They've since installed steps, so it's a dual access now, but it was a rare and positive outcome for the disability community. And we should be proud of that. The idea for this particular motion came from consultation with the Kandangia West community during the election campaign. And unfortunately, we're not quick enough to assist Kandangia West in their accessible ramp for their corner shop. But that is another example of what could be achieved in collaboration on a broader scale. Though we know people can become afflicted with disabilities without any warning or fault of their own. We've seen tragic outcomes within the town of Salamba after a cycling accident. And most recently, our mayor, he's doing, looking great on it, but these things can happen to any of us at any time. So there's a plethora of countless stories from people suffering lifelong injuries from subpar infrastructure across this municipality. So I urge you and everybody to think about what that must be like to live with on a daily basis. It's, this motion is complimentary to our disability and inclusion strategy, which has recently gone out for public consultation. It could help position Greater Shepparton as leaders of accessibility. We're an aging population with the benefit of a largely flat geographical design. Improved access could encourage tourism, potentially boost the construction industry in tough COVID times, and arguably more valuable than a grant to paint shops, because it can be measurably used to increase clientele. It can dispel disability stigma, and it can decrease feelings of isolation, which leads to pressure on, on services. So, yeah, it will improve public participation, enhance community wellbeing, and it will certainly not put undue pressure on businesses. As with all our matching grants, this will be a hundred percent voluntary. We probably can't predict the reach and benefit until we thoroughly explore the proposal in a report and put it into action. In terms of resources, the report can be done in-house, and the scheme itself will only cost council what the community itself is willing to put into it. Access and inclusion should be front and centre of all our decision-making as councillors. Buildings themselves should be fitted with universal access that includes doorways, wide enough wheelchairs and walking aids. That's another battle to be won. We do have the means and capacity for this first step. I won't say first because there has been work done, but for this step, but we do require some political will. And I hope councillors will demonstrate that today by supporting this motion, because it will certainly make many, many lives in our municipality a lot easier.
Thank you very much. Counselor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
I will. Thank you, Mary Keefe. Firstly, thank you, Counselor Summer, for putting this notice of motion forward. It's about the intent of what this motion is. It's about universal access. It's about looking at potentially matching a grand scheme for commercial properties. But it's more about the investigation and reporting to see what's actually out there, because we don't really know. It's not about what we're doing wrong, because we're doing so many things right. And in fact, from a council perspective, it's actually the opposite. We're doing so much right. It's more about supporting those who need it the most. And really, to support those commercial businesses who would like to do more to help that out, whether that be in the CBD, or as Counselor Summer pointed out, you know, in Kandangia or Dukie or Merrigan or Tatura. It's for everywhere across the municipality to have a look at, to see how we can help. What do we do right here already? I mean, we've already got grants and funding programs and community matching grants. We've already got the universal and access and inclusion plan. We've got mobility maps. If somebody's wanting to put on an event or an enterprise, you know, we have checklists and regulatory support for this as well. And we've got, you know, Mark Tompkins, who's our access and inclusion officer. We do so much right from a council perspective, but it's more looking from a business perspective how we can do better. And perhaps, you know, what additional support? Maybe this is just the, the missing piece in the universal access jigsaw that we need. There may well be evidence, there's already existing, that there are perhaps state or other government grants that we can be incorporated into this, or expanded, or maybe a new one established. You know, and what do other regional centres such as Bendigo and Ballarat do, where they've got older establishments, where people have difficulty getting in? I mean, Counselor Summer and I anecdotally observed the other day, how many people needed better access to premises? How many people are wheelchair-bound, went past us? How many in scooters? How many walking around with frames or visually impaired? It's about people not having to just use the back door anymore, but they could actually use the front door. Because you can use the back door, and businesses do that really well to help them, but to be reminded again and again that you have to use the back door instead of the front door. So when you stop, when you see, when you feel, and when you understand, that's what this is all about, this particular motion. How we recognise and support the more vulnerable members of our society. How we, it reflects on how we are as a society, as a community and as a council, and therefore I support this motion.
Thank you very much, Counselor Brophy. Any council wish to speak against the motion? Would a council wish to speak to the motion? Counselor James?
Thank you, Mary Keefe. Yeah, look, again, I'd like to thank Counselor Summer for raising, for, for raising this recommendation. I support the motion in regards to, if you, there are quite a few buildings and structures around town which are potential hazards and falls and risks to the, to the council. And a lot of them don't comply with the current regulations and, and compliance under the old Uniform Building Regulations Act. But more, most importantly, and I think, you know, if I use the example of one for the steps, the rise and fall of steps in the old structure, there's a certain height and distance. Well, that, there are quite a number of, of steps around the town that just don't comply and are basically hazards for us. So this will give us, provide us the opportunity for, to, you know, to do a bit of a reconnaissance, a reconnaissance tour around and have a look at these sites. So, yeah, so fully support the motion from Counselor Summer.
Thank you very much, Counselor James. Would any other council wish to speak to the motion? Counselor Spinks?
Thank you, Mary Keefe. Just to reiterate, Counselor Summer mentioned it in her speech, but also to reiterate that at the most recent Disability Advisory Committee meeting, I did raise this point to ask if the concept was supported by the committee, as I am the representative councillor rep on that particular committee. And I thought I'd take it straight to the people we're talking about. And there is already work being done in this space behind the scenes, which greatly supports this motion being on the table. So the need for greater access
this motion being on the table. So the need for greater access and inclusion across Greater Shepparton is necessary, obviously. And this motion supports, focuses and prioritises the work that is being done and that needs to be done. So I look forward to receiving the report and thank you to councillor Summer for bringing this motion to the table. It has my full support and the support of the Disability Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Sally?
Thanks, Mayor Keefe. Look, obviously some really positive comments have been made by my fellow councillors and I just want to echo them and congratulate councillor Summer on putting forward this motion. She'll know very, know that we've spoken about this before and shared some ideas around it and absolutely I'm supportive of it. And also, well done, councillor Brophy, you backed up councillor Summer's comments very well. So congratulations and yes, I'm very supportive of this.
Much. Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Presley?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. Yes, congratulations councillor Summer, terrific comments. Just a few comments that I'd like to get on the record as far as the implementation of this, should it come in in the future? And that's a long way away. We need a report and so forth. I, I guess some of the things I'd love to see considered is how council will ensure that funds aren't used to supplement or, or fund works that would otherwise have occurred. So obviously when somebody's constructing a new building, they've got minimum obligations to, to meet. It'd be my view that this fund shouldn't be used for that or for other aberrations where landholders need to meet their minimum requirements. This is about a fund, in my view, that would be looking at trying to resolve issues from earlier days when standards were not what they are today.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? So just prior to going to the vote, obviously I've had a very different lens on at the moment and I have known that this motion has been coming up. Thank you councillor Summer. Walking the walk at the moment very differently. I'm looking at things extremely differently. So I can definitely see the need that we need to be in this space and be doing things better and supporting local commercial businesses. Perhaps, you know, haven't even understood perhaps, you know, what they need to be doing or they haven't got to the level that is required. I think that's probably more the conversation. Many are doing some great, great things, but I have had some personal challenges this last few weeks. But yeah, let's keep doing what, what we need to do in the community. You know, we can help people do it better. This is what this is about. So, well done everyone. All right, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. All right, we'll move on to the final item, which is urgent business, which is nil received. Just prior to closing at four thirty five, I would just like to comment on councillor Brophy's making this artwork he has sitting behind him. Now, I do hear it's a very renowned artist. It's been very nice to enjoy that work tonight. All right, we're now, the meeting is closed at four thirty three. Thank you very much, everyone.